Good evening, everyone. It is 7:05 PM and I hereby call to order the May 2018 meeting of the Village of Tivoli Board of Trustees. At this time, would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Clerk Bruno, a schedule of upcoming events, please.
A schedule of upcoming events would be Monday, May 28th. The American Legion Harris Coast will be hosting a Memorial Day service 10:00 AM in the north side of the Red Church Center.
They once again asked me to speak briefly, so I always appreciate that honor and am going to be in town that day to do it, so you're off the hook.
I'll return there as well.
Yes, good. It's always a very moving ceremony and the Red Church, of course, is a really special spot, so Memorial Day. Thank you.
Do you want to listen to their report as well?
Sure, please.
So bear in mind that the office, the village clerk's office, will be closed on Monday, May 28th. It'll be in the service for a more tonight and I will also, in fact, be at the service with the Harris Smith Post. But for the other bits of the report, there were two payrolls processed this past month. One planning board meeting was attended by Chris McLeiblin, the deputy clerk, and 379 Treasury Adams.
Thank you. It's probably never too early to mention yard sale day, right? I mean, you've already had requests, have you not?
I've already made the forms and they have been emailed out. Yes, people are already signing up.
So yard sale day this year falls on the 28th of July.
Yep, the last Saturday.
And people can register the yard sale with the clerk. People have already done that, but it'd be us to the punch though. Okay, thank you, Clerk Bruno. Trustees, we have two sets of minutes in your binders, April 18th regular board meeting and the April 25th workshop. You've had a chance to review these and at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve both sets of minutes.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
That was Schneider followed by Major. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved, moving on to the treasurer's report. So our fiscal year ends at the end of this month, May 31st, and the new year starts June 1st and so this is, we've done pretty well and there, but there are a lot of budget modifications in the last month as you start getting to the end. But the treasurer's report, our last full abstract in this fiscal year. Out of the general fund, we spent $39,275.97. Out of the water fund, $13,749.28. And out of the sewer fund, $38,597. Most of that was for the RBC shaft repair. Okay, I'll explain that a little later. And the expendable trust, $283.70. That's our beautification fund and we actually replaced a couple of trees that we lost under the tree committee, some of our commemorative trees, so. For a grand total of $91,905.95. Is there a motion to accept the treasurer's report?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
That was Murphy followed by Major. Any discussion? Just want to say thank you to treasurer today. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there a motion to pay bills?
So moved.
That was Schneider followed by Major. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those can be paid. Moving on to a zoning report and trustee Izrodi not present tonight, you want to take that one?
Sure.
Thank you trustee Murphy.
Okay, for April 2018, the code enforcement department. Here are the activities. There were two building permits reviewed and issued, six building inspections performed, five complaints submitted and investigated, six issued zoning violations for garbage cans, zero court hearings, three municipal searches requested and completed, and zero fire inspections scheduled. Scheduled, sorry.
Thank you trustee Murphy. So I think we had 14 can citations last report, six, you know, still happening.
Getting better.
Pull in your cans, please. Trying to keep the sidewalks clear and the village is comely and we are enforcing that. It's a $50 ticket and you have to come to court, so it's much easier to pull your cans in, so. Our code enforcement officer, I think, continues to do a very good job and be very engaged in the needs of the community, so we appreciate that. We have a long agenda, lots of things and this is usually when we ask for public comment on agenda items only. Maybe in the interest of time, if there's anything in particular you'd like to comment on, I can explain it a little bit rather than me just explaining all eight things. We'll get to the...
Okay.
Okay, thank you public, then we will dive right in. Get to my resolutions. First item of regular business, resolution on proposed budget modifications. Trustees, we went over this in depth in the workshop, so we sort of have two groups of modifications. One of them modifies the final 2019 budget, which doesn't start until June 1st, but there was settling the final salaries issue, so we sort of knew that was coming and we're going to have this done, so there's no retroactivity that the treasurer needs to do after June 1st, so we discussed that. And then again, being the end of the fiscal year, as the sort of pinch comes, there are more budget mods than usual this month, but you'll see, you know, the attorney line and the building line, fortunately, we had some money left over and so, that was unspent. And then all these increases over here, you know, some small ones at the clerk's office and there was an SCA software.
Yes, the municipality.
Yep. But the big thing here is the about $6,500 that we have spent on the softball field, which we were able to do because we saw there was a little room in the budget this year. And if you haven't been over there, it looks really nice. I hope the storm yesterday didn't blow off too much of the topsoil and the grass seed which had been applied yesterday morning, but we're going to, it really looks amazing. Field's been rolled, infield dirt, new baselines cut, work on the dugouts is still in process. Been a lot of carpentry, replacing rock, fences getting fixed. And unfortunately, the only downside is no one can play ball for about another two to three weeks till the grass takes in, so. I've spoken with the league, they're prepared for this and I hope that the nice field they get to use makes up for the delay in the game. So those are the budget modifications. Is there a motion to adopt the proposed budget mods?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Thanks for keeping it tidy, Joel.
You are welcome. It's my pleasure. I'll do a roll call. Deputy Mayor, Major.
Aye.
Trustee Murphy.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
And I also vote aye, the budget mods are adopted. Okay, next we have resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement between the Village of Tivoli and Monumental Lodge 374 of the free and accepted masons for the lease of certain real property for a parking area. So this is over on North Road, we've been doing this for a number of years and we also do some snow storage back there when we have a lot. Here's the lease, I believe, here up to $1,400 a year. So that's a $50 increase from last year. So with that said, is there a motion to authorize the execution of the agreement for the masons parking lot?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's on the table, so deputy mayor, Major.
Aye.
Trustee Murphy.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
I also vote aye and we can renew this parking lot lease agreement. Moving on to number three, the 2018-19 tax warrants. And this literally commands our treasurer to collect the property taxes. For the current budget, it's $459,818 and there are additional liens totaling $16,659.95 for a grand total of $475,883.95. Is there a motion to issue the tax warrant to the treasurer?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
The additional lien to that would be water and sewer bills.
Right, so you can see, we have in your binders, it is water and sewer bills, I don't know, sometimes if you have an unpaid fine, that can end up there, but these really look like all water and sewer payments.
Yeah, all water and sewer.
Thank you clerk Bruno. With that discussion, are we ready to vote? Deputy Mayor, Major.
Aye.
Trustee Murphy.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
I also vote aye. Number four, this is approving a memorandum of agreement, an MOA, for the renewal of a collective bargaining agreement between the Village of Tivoli and United Public Service Employees Union. So the three members of our DPW are in a union. Generally, these contracts are about three years and are renegotiated every three years. This was the year, so I will thank trustee Schneider for joining me on those negotiations and our labor attorney Carl Whitbeck was always outstanding and his associate Corinne, who came first time. And I think we arrived at a decent agreement, both parties feel that way, so this is a memorandum of understanding, this is not the final contract approval, but this is a step in the process to agree and approve the MOA. With that said, is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
That was Schneider followed by Murphy. Any discussion?
No, it's okay, it's just both of you are doing it.
Yes, you're welcome. It's a, it's work. It's definitely work. Okay, you know, and it's, you know, trying to look out for the interests of the residents and the taxpayers and, you know, what can we realistically offer in terms of health insurance and compensation and, you know, pay increases, longevity, all those things. And, you know, there are real fiscal restraints, particularly the rising healthcare costs. I think we've managed to do pretty well.
It's gonna be awesome.
You know, we appreciate what those gentlemen do, but there's no way to avoid that you're on literally different sides of the table, so.
I think you've done well for the village and also done well for...
I don't think they see it that way. With that said, we did the motion? Yes, okay, voting. Deputy Mayor, Major.
Aye.
Trustee Murphy.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
I also vote aye. Number five, all right. This is a resolution declaring intent to serve as lead agency for the water system improvements and the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Water System Transfer Project. So this is something we need to do under SEACER, State Environmental Quality, is it Review?
Review Act.
Review Act, yes. And we need to, so there are two things we're doing. One is about, should we, you know, are there, what are the impacts, environmental impacts for transferring the systems? Now, most of it is replacement in kind, so a water main gets replaced with a water main and there's no change to what's going on. The big one here is the water tank. We'll get to that more later in tonight's discussion, but, so this is to say that we're going to be the lead agency and maybe you could help me out, council, rattle off the list of other entities that we are informing.
Well, so, the point is that you're going to declare yourself as the agency for purposes of undertaking the SEACER process, so part of the SEACER process in Tivoli is if we have something that's called an unlisted action, it becomes a type one action because we have an historic district. So we go through a long form EAF and we go through a coordinated review, which requires us to notify anybody else who would be taking an action about this same issue. So in this case, it's going to be Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority, they'll also be considering the issues here, so we need to coordinate with them. So we'll give them our draft environmental assessment form, part one, that's been prepared by our engineers and they will see that and they could first comment on whether or not they want to be lead agency, save for any of the other agencies that might be involved. We're also going to be applying to Environmental Facilities Corporation, New York State, for potential financing to assist with trying to reduce the cost of that project, so they will also have to do SEACER, so we will also be notifying them. So there's a series of those types of entities. We will be reviewing this in more detail after we go through the lead agency process, but in the first instance, we have an environmental assessment form, as I said, and a coastal assessment form prepared by our engineer, which describes the project and describes what's involved. And that includes some alternatives, which I know you're going to be talking about a little bit later. And so the purpose of this is to review those potential impacts. And what you will be doing procedurally is, once you notify the others, then you'll be in a position to make a decision that you will in fact serve as lead agency because either nobody else stuck their hand up or somebody did and we worked it out. So then, once you're at that point, you can proceed to evaluate the impacts and at that point, we'll have a part two that we'll review and a part three, which will be reviewing the potential impacts and whether or not they can be mitigated. And so that will be what we'll be going through. So do you want me to talk about the next resolution or just this one?
We could take them both together and then we'll go back and vote, so if you want to proceed to the Monroe hearing.
Right, so there's another resolution that is regarding the same matter. As a part of our review of this project, we need to decide how we're going to proceed with the approvals that are necessary. In this particular case, as you indicated, the major project here is the decision about the storage tank. Any project like that ordinarily, one of the parties involved would be the planning board, maybe the zoning board, depending on where the project is located and whether there are variances or part of that sort of thing. So in this case, one of the things the village needs to decide is whether or not that decision is a decision that should be made by the, this board, as the village board, because it involves an essential public service, your water supply, as opposed to, you know, where does a store go, where does a, you know, whatever.
House.
Right. So there is a process that is referred to as Monroe because it's named after a case that was involved whereby the village can hold a public hearing, consider a number of factors and determine whether or not it's appropriate for the village to assume the responsibility for making those decisions in this case. So in order to start that process, you would set a public hearing to consider those issues, whether or not essentially the village board would, whether and to what extent the village's zoning laws would apply to this project, basically. There's a number of factors, you know, the nature and scope of what you're doing here, the effect that if you applied land use regulation, what would it do, how essential is this purpose to you, those sorts of things are in the longer list of things you're going to be considering. So you'll consider that second resolution to call a public hearing and I think we've scheduled tentative, like, June 13th for that.
Yes, and because the siting and design of a water tower is not a very, like, everyday thing, there's nothing in the code that the planning or zoning boards would refer to like there is about a setback on a garage, which is more typical, or a fence, this is so unusual and anomalous that we're considering the Monroe determination, which is that, you know, we would make those approvals rather than sending it to the planning board like a fence or something more complex.
So that's the question and so the second resolution is to set a hearing, you talk about that.
Okay, thank you council, that's very helpful. Okay, so trustees, number five, the resolution declaring intent to serve as lead agency for the water system improvements and DCWWA Water System Transfer Project. Is there a motion? That was the deputy mayor, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? So again, this is just, we tell the other entities that we'd like to be lead, it's not even that we're lead yet, right? That comes later.
We're like, it's starting the process.
Starting the process.
Right.
A roll call vote, please. Deputy Mayor, Major.
Aye.
Trustee Murphy.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
I also vote aye. And they have, is it 30 days?
Yes.
You let us know if they disagree. All right, moving on, this is the public hearing. We are proposing to set this for 7:00 PM on June 13th, that's our board workshop night. That may be in this room, it may be on the third floor, I'm not sure yet, but that would be the time. And again, this is for all interested parties on the proposed water system transfer and water improvement projects, including a review to determine whether and to what extent Tivoli's zoning laws apply to the proposed action. So is there a motion to set the public hearing for June 13th, 7:00 PM?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
No, but it's exciting to be moving this along.
Yes, absolutely. We're going to be moving along at a pretty good clip and I'm going to talk about an event tomorrow night that everyone needs to come to because there is big money out there that we want to make sure we are in a position to apply for, so that, that's the pace in addition to our many water main breaks every winter, it's the reason to get this stuff fixed. All right, roll call vote, please. Deputy Mayor, Major.
Aye.
Trustee Murphy.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
I also vote aye.
And I also want to note that we did have a conversation with DCWWA's council today. We had given them comments on an agreement to tailor it a little bit more to Tivoli and they were very open to those comments, so they seem to be working very cooperatively with us on that.
Okay, next we have a resolution engaging Ty &amp; Bond as the backup designated village engineer. The Village of Tivoli has been working with Crawford and Associates as our designated village engineer for the last three years and very happy with the service we get from them, but it's always a good idea to have a backup engineer in case there's a conflict or they're not available, you want to have someone else that's in place that you can pick up the phone in the middle of the night and hire them for your engineering needs if your primary DVE is not available. Ty &amp; Bond, we've gotten to know quite well, I have to say, over the last three years because that, they're the same firm who did our water and sewer reports and we have hired them on a smaller basis to help us with this water tank SEACER process and some of the financing applications. We looked at them when we first chose an engineer, again, three years ago, and we looked at about 13 different firms, so we knew them from that. And lastly, our previous backup engineer, there was a lot of change of personnel and sort of weren't as present with us, so. We've talked about this and is there a motion to engage Ty &amp; Bond as our backup DVE?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And we have their full scheduled qualifications and their rates, we've all looked at that, so. Any further discussion? I just, you know, I've worked with the personnel and they are very, very good at this, so glad to have them. A roll call vote, please. Deputy Mayor, Major.
Aye.
Trustee Murphy.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
I also vote aye. Welcome to formally welcome Ty &amp; Bond. And lastly, best for last hopefully, a resolution establishing a 2018 Village Cleanup Day for Monday, August 13th, 2018. Well, this is something that maybe happens years ago in the past and has not happened for a long time in the village where in addition to Tuesday pickup and whatever private haulers people use for those big items that we all accumulate and where do they go and maybe you don't have a truck and maybe you can't, you know, it's not easy to lift a couch or a dresser or what have you. We have heard for too long the concerns from residents about facilitating like an annual junk day, so we are trying, we're going to try this. I feel quite optimistic and I just want to recognize Glenn and Leslie Baker for sort of like our little committee who's helped me with this research in the last few weeks and I certainly appreciate both your patience in getting here to this point, but also, you know, you're caring about the village and trying to, you know, basically help me and the board create a service to benefit all of us and I really hope it's a success this year. So the way it's going to work is, and we looked at some private companies and we've ended up trying a model where we use Welsh sanitation, who the village currently contracts with, so all that garbage we collect and recycling we collect every Tuesday, they handle that, so they will, we can rent a dump truck with two people on it for, you know, hourly rate, we get a reduced municipal rate on that. So what's going to happen and this will all be in the water bill that comes out June 1st, so August 13th is a ways off. Residents are going to be able to register with the clerk, they'll have a little form, they can drop it off, send it in, contact you in some way and say, I live at 5 North Road, here's $20 payable to the Village of Tivoli, and then we will compile all those addresses and then, you know, the day before the truck comes, they're going to have the list of addresses and they're going to go to all those pre-registered addresses and pick up the junk. At $20, I've talked to Mike Carl and Jim Simmons and anyone who does deal with junk all said, you can't beat that. That's, that's, sorry, just to put it in some context because of course, we did have concerns about participation depending on what we charge, so. That's the cleanup day we're going to try and as this moves forward and the literature comes out, which we're going to work on tomorrow, I think, you know, there'll be a list of acceptable items, non-acceptable items, and then e-waste, electronics. On the same day the truck's going around, there's going to be a receptacle and a person here at Village Hall, so you can drive and drop off your electronics. There will be an additional fee scheduled for that. E-waste is expensive to deal with and so it's about $25, $27 for a television, for example, but, you know, you only have to take it to Village Hall and then it's out of your house, so. Acceptable items on the, you know, truck route, tires, beach chairs, bed frames, blankets, chairs, dressers, futons, love seats, sofas, tables and stands, fans, toilets or tanks, sinks, vanities, microwave toaster, toaster oven, vacuums, garbage doors, rugs and carpets. I, I'm going to have to do some research and figure out, we need to figure out like washers, dryers and refrigerators. Because it's not on the list and we'll figure that out and we'll add, you know, what do you do if you've got a washer? I think I saw one today somewhere. Yeah, so. And then the non-acceptable items, chemicals, paints, driveway sealant, pool chemicals, creosote, kerosene, gas, flammable, fertilizers, mercury devices, automotive batteries, medical waste, propane tanks. And as I said to the nice gentleman at Welsh, I said, what's acceptable, what's not acceptable? He said, anything that makes my dump truck explode and catch on fire is unacceptable. So.
Okay.
Your old couch might not do that, but the can of pool chemicals are...
The fusilli, the fusilli.
Yes, all right. So more details on our first junk day to come, but we want to resolve to get this truck rolling. Is there a motion to establish the 2018 Village Cleanup Day?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
That was Murphy followed by Schneider. Any further discussion from the board? I hope that people will participate and that this will be a success and of course, the more people sign up, it may come close to actually paying for itself, in which case it becomes that much easier to just make it an annual thing, so take advantage of this. I did research, I spoke to mayors and supervisors from other communities and how they do this and one thing I asked, I believe it was supervisor Gallagher, I said, do people not participate because it's $20? And he said, it's a lot cheaper than the $250 fine the code enforcement officer will give them for the, for the thing. So take advantage of it, it's an opportunity, it's an experiment and I think it will be, I hope it will be a success.
And just as a note, it is two weeks after yard sale day, so don't leave that stuff out.
Never to that. That's right. That's right, so. A roll call vote, please. Deputy Mayor, Major.
Aye.
Trustee Murphy.
Aye.
Trustee Schneider.
Aye.
I also vote aye. The next board meeting will be held on Wednesday, June 20th at 7:00 PM preceded by a workshop at 6:00 PM here at the historic Washtepiester Hall and our regular workshop will be June 13th at 7:00 PM and that is also, again, the public hearing on this Monroe question, should the village board be the approving entity on the water tank siting under SEACER? Moving on to committee reports, trustee Izrodi is not present, so I'd like to ask trustee Murphy to do the water and sewer, or excuse me, the water report.
I will do that. I wouldn't ask Susan, but I will attempt. So April rainfall. So April rainfall, various precipitation. Yeah, you're up. 4.86 rainfall and 3.5 of snow.
Wow.
In April.
Curfew.
Yeah. Okay, so the water report, so go through the lots. The Ballot Field was off. McKnight 1 was dick pumping April, 340,000 gallons. Pots West 2 was on and up variously, 133,000 gallons. Pot West 5 was off. Pot West East 4 and Pot West East 10 were pumping 569,000 gallons for the month of April. The Woodmark Wells pumped 722,000 gallons. The height, various heights of the water tower ranged from 165 feet to 171 feet for the month of April. And we also had a water systems operation report, microbiological sample results. Let's see. Number required of samples, routine samples, two. Number of actual samples were two. There were no M and A, R violations, and there were no MCL violations either. And this was formed by James Simmons.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. Do you wanna talk about rec at this time?
Oh, yeah. So I did put up on Facebook our flyer and registration. Actually, I didn't put the registration form, just a flyer up on the Tivoli Neighbors 12583 Facebook page. It's gotten some circulation, a lot of likes, which is great. Also, we have PDF of the flyer and the registration form on the village website. And I'm working on getting those also into the Red Hook Central School District's backpack, so it's available for residents there as well. So if you're interested in the program, go on the website, download those, get those into the village office. Any questions, feel free to call me or email me.
And the dates of the program this year are?
August 6th through the 17th.
So those two?
Those two weeks, Monday through Friday, and we are extending it from 9 to 2, so lunches will have to be brought.
Very exciting. We'll bite off a little more this year than last year.
Yeah, a little bit.
And what's the, what's the fee?
You know, off the top of my head, I forgot what it was.
Okay. Do you remember what it was last year?
I think it was $20 or $25.
Right, and it's a little less for residents.
A little less for a sibling as well, if you have siblings. And it's a little, yeah, less for village residents.
Great. So everything's on the village website in the document center, which is where we tend to put things when we say, I know.
Oh, yeah, document center.
A little hard to find your way around the website, despite how much better it is than the old one. But, yeah, document center, that's where these things live.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, trustee Murphy. Trustee Schneider?
All right, so we have the village of Tivoli Justice Court Report for the month of April. Just looking over this, we had a total of eight charges received and 31 disposed. $2,144 was collected and remitted to the state comptroller.
See, I was jumping around on you, so this is your slot again. Have you said everything you wanna say? Because you were doing this, Ravi, and then Murphy, so you're good? Okay. Deputy Mayor Major.
Okay, well, I sort of fell down on the, on the report this evening. So I can assure you that the library continues to do fabulous things each and every day, but for specific details about special programs coming up, please go to the website, tivoli-free-library.org. Two, two things for Historic Red Hook. The Duchess County Historic Tavern Trail is having one of their events at the Corner on June 8th. And this is something they do every year. The Duchess County Historian goes around. And this year, the topic is the Year of the Veteran, right? So it's 100 years after the end of World War I. And so Friday, June 8th at 6:30, Will Tatum, the county historian, and I are gonna be spinning yarns about Tivoli during the Great War. And you're encouraged, you're invited to stay for dinner. There's a discounted rate for people who are attending the talk. And the, the talk is $5. If you wanna stay for dinner, you should make reservations. And the annual House and Barn Preservation Expo at the Elmendorf Inn is the following day, Saturday, June 9th, from 10 to 3. And this is, it's like a, sort of an antiques roadshow format, where we have a whole bunch of preservation people and planning people and, you know, general nerds, who, you know, we have architects who have experience with historic properties. And we have masons who work on, you know, on old masonry and plaster, and timber framers, and a blacksmith, and a historic roofer. And representatives from the villages and from the town on the planning boards, who, so we want people to come with like questions about their homes or about, you know, historic properties in general. Bring your questions and you can get answers. And it's, it's free, and there's music, and there's food, and it's lots of fun, and hopefully weather will be good. So, June 9th, 10 to 3. There's a thing that is, was supposed to be tonight, but it's actually, hopefully, gonna be tomorrow night, weather permitting. And it's Jupiter over Montgomery Place. And it's free, 8:30. And there is a professor who's gonna be giving a talk about Jupiter from the days of Galileo up to the latest NASA missions. And that will be followed with a telescope viewing of Jupiter over Montgomery Place, 'cause that's where it is right now. And a guided tour of the night sky, and a round of what they call Ask a Physicist Anything. So, free, hopefully tomorrow night, weather permitting. And, uh, cool stuff at Claremont, as always. The first of the summer concerts is gonna be Thursday, May 24th at 6:00 PM. And there's gonna be, on June 10th, a lecture on the dress reform movement of the mid-19th century, which was very liberating for women. You know, getting out of corsets and, and all that. So that is June 10th at 1 o'clock. The River Sweep on the 5th of May was fantastic. Thank you to Welsh Sanitation for, again, donating a dumpster, which we filled up about halfway, and, you know, we had a bunch of volunteers. Picked up a lot of stuff, but it was mostly, you know, over the past couple of years of doing this, the garbage is much more land-based now. It's not stuff coming from the river. You know, it's not like dock parts or like boat stuff. This is like garbage. It's a lot, I'm, I'm looking at Bud Light drinkers and granola bar eaters differently now as a result of that. So I would just like everybody to think about, like, when you're out walking around the village, everything that's on the street is gonna blow down into the river. And that crappy, so please pick stuff up. The dock was not in at the bay as last time I checked, and it takes her out.
One thing about the library.
Yes.
Because we met with them last week, the members of the board, is they're doing a program called Let's Talk Tivoli, where the Tivoli Free Library is reaching out to the community to find out what the needs and wants of the community are, to create their long-term goals for the library and their involvement with the community. They're having an event Saturday, this Saturday at 2:00 PM at the library. All residents and anybody in the community can come and join the discussion. They're also having another one Wednesday, May 30th at 5:30 at the Truck Haven. One on Monday, June 18th at 6:00 PM at the Red Hook Community Center. And one Wednesday, July 11th at 2:00 PM at Provost Park Community Center. So come out. We sat with them. I think it was a great conversation about the needs and the wants of, of the community, what might be missing, what we might, our perception might be different from other people, and we might have our eyes open to what is missing for them as well. So I think it's a great outreach by the library and the library board to interact with the community.
Excellent. Thanks for mentioning that. It was, it was a really great conversation. Everybody has things to say about Tivoli, whether they're good, bad, upside down, or one way or the other, but there wasn't a lot of dead air, I guess, fair to say.
Yeah, there were a lot of insightful questions. And I think that we all sort of view the library as one of the hubs in a community. So I think that the initiative here is really amazing. And I would absolutely encourage anybody to go out and attend other forums. I think you'll be a little bit surprised at what you hear there, and some really great stuff.
Yeah, and I mean, the library, you know, the role is so expanded. You know, it's not just, you know, when I was a kid, we worked for books.
Yeah, anymore.
We worked for books. We worked for coffee center, yeah.
And it's expanded a little bit.
So I think, you know, in terms of programming.
Well, as I was leaving my office yesterday a little after 4:00, I got hauled into the library to participate as a voter in the chocolate chip contest, right? Various baked foods, and I had to sample about eight different contestants.
I'm sure that was really difficult.
Pick one, very challenging, yeah. So they definitely diversified, diversified the programming from just the books. I have a number of things to go through, so I'll go sort of quickly. I wanna mention that in season six of the Community Garden, we have full participation. We have, every plot has been claimed by a gardener for this season. We have a new garden coordinator, Jackie Goss, who's off to a great start. And we've been getting rain, and they're, you know, it's already looking pretty good over there. So just pleased with that, you know, it's been six summers now, and it's taken hold.
My plot has grown pretty well. I haven't even planted it.
Yes. Let's see. Our streets have been swept. We partner with Red Hook. We buy a set of brushes and they bring their truck over, the truck that they hire. So the streets have been swept a little earlier this year than last year. And in Village Hall, you may have seen coming in that the halls are pretty bare. That's because we've been replastering and repainting. And it's done two weekends, we've got one more weekend, so they'll be finished this weekend, and then all the art can go back up. And so that will, now, our third year of this process, we've done the clerk's office, mayor's office, this room, zoning office. Now we're doing the halls, and, and next year will be the third floor. And then all the walls in this building will have been redone. And so then, also coming up soon will be the front doors. We have a long-time Tivolian, I'm not sure I'm ready to mention their name yet, but they, he or she, they have offered to make a donation so that we can scrape and paint and then refinish the front doors to this building. I'm getting a quote on that right now. I will speak with our benefactor, and that should happen very soon as well. And I still wanna do that light?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So Village Hall repairs continue. Doors coming. And just to mention one more time, Memorial Day at the Red Church with the Harris Smith Post on Monday, the 28th. Tivoli Yard Sale Day in July 28th. Tivoli Community Day on August 4th, and Tivoli Cleanup Day on August 13th. One other special event coming up is gonna be held on June 25th at 10:30 AM. And this is going to be the dedication ceremony of the completed bridge on Broadway. I know it's not completed tonight. So one way to get them to finish up is set the ribbon cutting, right? So we've been coordinating with Duchess County, with the county executive. And as I mentioned at the State of the Village address, it is with great pride and pleasure that we're gonna be dedicating that bridge to Bernie Teager, our late, great village historian, trustee, member of the planning board, community booster. He was, he led the charge on the centennial celebrations in 1972. His impact broadly felt. And so we have a nice plaque that's being made that's gonna be mounted to the side of the bridge. And 10:30 AM on a Monday, June 25th, come on down to the bridge and, and help us dedicate our bridge. And I said, you know, "The county has to build this bridge." And I was speaking with the county executive, and I, and he said, "It's gonna be your party. It's a village thing." So.
We'll show mouse dung.
We'll show mouse dung, that's it. And they better get their capstones on and fix that third light before that.
Fourth light.
And, yeah, and clean up all the stuff, so. And again, we are enforcing the garbage can thing. Please bring your cans in, in and out every week. And also, as we get into warmer weather, I just wanna remind everyone that the village is patrolled by deputies from the Duchess County Sheriff's Office. And they enforce all our laws, whether it's late-night noise, or nuisance gatherings, or speeding, stop signs. I have seen the troopers in town a lot. So as always, please obey all the laws, traffic laws, full stops, all of that. And if you have a problem and you need to call, that's the Duchess County Sheriff's Office. It's 486-3800, 3800. And the last thing, and the most important thing, tomorrow night, 7:00 PM, right here upstairs, is going to be our Water Tower Forum. We have advertised this as broadly as possible on Facebook. It's been, it's the first time I've used the emergency red on the village website for the alerts, because we really want people to come. So if you have not heard, the village of Tivoli is intending to transfer our water and sewer systems to the Duchess County Water and Wastewater Authority. That's a long process, hasn't happened yet. That is our intention. We spent all last year in a number of public conversations with you to arrive at that intention. One of the things that needs to happen sort of alongside of that is the replacement of our water tower, the water tank, the storage tank. 1938, it's 80 years old. Next year will be 81. It is undersized. It is also in need of a very expensive repainting job. And that repainting job actually costs more than a new water tank. So for a number of reasons, I'm sorry to tell those who are very attached to it, but that water tower is going to go away. It will be taken down and replaced. There are several tank styles that we could choose to replace it. And there are also two possible locations. One is next to this current tower on Pine Street. Picture where it's sort of between the current tower and the Community Garden on the skate ramp somewhere in there. The other location that we've identified is a village-owned utility parcel off of Broadway, where the McKnight Well Field is. And I certainly didn't know what the McKnight Well Field was until I was a trustee. So for all of you who've never served on the village board, when you drive into the village and you pass the Monument Hill on your right, and you keep going, you come to a large mowed, grassy area with an odd little building in the middle on your right, before you go down the hill to the bridge. So that is the McKnight Well Field. That little building's actually a wellhouse. There's, one of our eight wells is there. So that is a parcel that could have the next water tower on it. So tomorrow night at 7:00, Aaron Moore from Ty and Bond, the engineer we've been working with for three years, is going to join me in a presentation of information. This is a chance for residents to learn about the pros and cons of the two locations, and also the pros and cons of three different styles of tank. So one tank is what's called a multi-column or a multi-leg tank. That's sort of what we have. It doesn't look like a 1938 one, but it's, you know, it's a tank on legs, most similar to what we have. That's one. The other one is called a composite elevated tank, which is a cement tower with a tank on top. It's also elevated. It uses gravity. And then the third style is a ground-mounted tank with pumps. So I think there's one of these in Red Hook. There's one by Bard Falls. Is that not a water tank there? I think so. So it's a big, it's a big soup can, about as big as a house. It sits on the ground. And, and instead of gravity to create the pressure throughout the system, you have electric pumps. So these are three styles. I've mentioned the two locations. There's a lot more information. And we will begin but not finish the conversation about which way do we wanna go. As, as I sit here tonight, I don't know which kind of tank we're gonna end up with, or where it's gonna go. I really don't. Tomorrow night will be the beginning of us together as a community reaching that decision. And we need to reach it pretty quickly, because we need to complete this seeker process that we talked about earlier and did the resolution on, so that we can go apply for financing. financing. So tomorrow night, 7 o'clock, it's gonna be a slideshow, we're gonna tell you about the tanks, tell you about the locations, answer questions, take comments, community conversation. I hope we're there for two and a half hours. And then we're gonna leave these pictures up. We've got photoshopped images that we've created of these three different tanks on Pine Street or at McKnight, so we can visualize this ahead of time. Those will be featured in the slideshow, and then we also have photographs that will be pinned up around the third floor, and we will leave them up for about two weeks. And so tomorrow night will begin, people can look, people can ask questions, and then in the coming, say about two weeks, Tivoli's gonna talk about their next water tank, we're gonna have a big conversation. And probably around June 1st or into the first week of June, we are going to have to start making a decision. So that's the process that we've, that we've laid out. I, I think it will be adequate, I think people will have strong feelings and, and good questions. But again, we have to sort of keep it moving along so that we can get these systems repaired and, and financed and transferred.
Also, the water tower has to come before the transfer, because we need to take care of this tower. You make a decision about that, so.
Right. Other comments from the board on this?
Just that we didn't mean to rain on the Jupiter Over Montgomery Place event tomorrow night, that's why I was gonna interrupt you, like, ah!
Actually, if you live in Tivoli, we don't want you to go to Jupiter Over Montgomery Place, we, we need you here at the Water Tower Forum.
Or meet the candidates.
I will say, if you're a diehard Jupiter Over Montgomery fan, and I know they're out there-
Humber now.
You have to come. But this, tomorrow night's presentation will be videotaped, we will have a link to it on, on the village website, it'll be on Panda, I'm sure. And the, as I said, the photographs are gonna stay up, and, and, you know, we'll put some sort of PDF of the presentation on the website. So again, if you need to watch Jupiter Over Montgomery Place and you don't come tomorrow night, it's not like you are gonna miss the conversation, you will miss the big kickoff in person with, I hope, 100 people or more, but you will be able to get the information through these other means.
I think that everybody should be here, and they can only get a dispensation if they go to Jupiter Over Montgomery Place.
Very good. So with all that said, we would like to open the floor to public comment. We're good?
I, I actually wanted to ask one question about, I'm just sitting here listening to all the different events that are taking place, and I know things are on the website, but you also have a calendar on the website, that when you pull, when you click on the calendar, what shows are the meetings?
Right.
And if the, all these events could get plugged in there with, you know, when you click on it and then a little bit of information about them, might be a user-friendly way of viewing events in the village.
I agree. I mean, it, it literally comes down to me or clerk finding another half hour in the week to stick 'em on there.
Sorry, Robin.
I mean, sometimes we have, I know, yeah, we, we will do our best to find that half hour, you know, we can lay out, you know, the summer's events. But, you know, we did change our website arrangements, so we can update it in-house, and when there's something urgent and important, I always put it up in the thing, but you're right, we're not taking advantage of the calendar capability of our website, yes, so. Thank you for noting that.
I think you just said, you know, doing it seasonally, like at the beginning of a season, and then as other events come up, we could just pop those in.
Yeah, yeah, or maybe we will-
And using the Firehouse Board a little bit more.
Yes, Firehouse Board.
People look at that.
Yeah, I did check with that, check on that about the junk day, and he said that's not a problem.
Okay.
That would be another source of information, so. Any other public comments? Comments from the board? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
Paul and David?
Aye.
7:59, thank you, everyone.